I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for May 3rd, 2023. Excuse me. Who's calling role is, oh, Alex is in back tonight. Alex, would you call role, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, Quilisi?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Starkweather?
Not yet.
Bennett?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Very good. We'll let you know when Starkweather shows up for the record. All right. Um, next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Trent, if you'll lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Lucas, any suggested changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, very good. Then we'll go on to public communications. The time set aside. Good evening.
There he is.
Time set aside for people to, uh, comment to the publ- to the Planning Commission on items of public business other than those that are on the agenda. So is there anyone here that would like to speak on something other than the three major items that we have on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Alex, Commissioner Starkweather is here. Do we have anyone in the waiting room with a hand raised for public communication?
No.
Okay, very good. Then we'll, uh, we'll move on to the consent items, the minutes of the regular meeting of April 5th and of April 19th. Do any commissioners have any refinements to those minutes? And a motion for approval would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Very good. Any discussion? Alex, would you call role on the consent items, one and two, please?
Murphy?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, let's, uh, oh, uh, next is disclosure of site, visits, and ex parte contacts. We do have two sites in question tonight, 1206 Ayers and 469 East Ojai. Commissioner Trent?
Uh, familiar with both sites, no ex parte contacts.
Very good.
Familiar with both sites, no ex parte.
Same for me. Familiar with both sites, no ex parte contacts.
Same for me.
Uh, I've visited both sites, but I just disclosed, but it's not ex parte. Uh, Katie Donwin is the, um, treasurer of the Democratic Club, so I meet with her regularly, but it had nothing to do with this, and we haven't talked about this. I just want-
Okay.
Because someone raised that on another issue, and, um, you know, she's a friend, and I've worked with her, but we've never talked about her-
And that's not an ex parte contact.
It's not, but I just want, because someone raised that kind of thing before with somebody I knew.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item, three, is a DRP for 1206 Ayers Avenue. Maura?
Thank you, Chair Quilisi and Commissioners. Um, design review permit 22-012 is for a remodel, including an addition of a second story to an existing single-story, single-family residence at 1206 Ayers. On February 12th, or, excuse me, February 15th, 2023, staff presented a proposal to the Planning Commission with a recommendation for denial, uh, for a remodel and second-story addition of this structure. Um, staff based the recommendation on nonconformance with the standards, um, section 10-2.2004 of the Ojai Municipal Code, and also goals and policies of the Ojai General Plan Land Use Element. The Planning Commission continued the item with, um, specific direction for staff, applicant, architects, uh, and neighbor to the south to, to, to meet and devise a development plan that complies with the municipal code, the general plan, land use policies, and also takes into account the privacy for the neighbor adjacent to the south. The Commission also directed staff to, to prepare a neighborhood floor area ratio study for existing two-story, single-family structures within a broader neighborhood, uh, because the study that was done for the last meet, for February 15th meeting, was specifically for this block. Um, and also, the Planning Commission directed that the applicant come back within 90 days, and, and so here, and here we are. Um, staff met with the applicant, the architects, and the adjacent neighbor to the south on March 24th, and at that meeting, the architect presented a revised plan that staff, staff felt, uh, was in compliance with the municipal code and the general plan, land use policies. The revised plans also addressed privacy for the adjacent neighbor to the south. Uh, a note to the Commissioners, you're charged with review and determination of a design review permit pursuant to section 10-2.2003 of the municipal code, as all applications for building permits for, um, a second story, or that include a second story, are subject to review and determination by the Planning Commission. The revised site and floor plans that you have show a reduction resulting in an increase in the south side yard setback from what was previously proposed as 16 feet to almost 18 feet currently. The revised proposal presents elements that blend with the established architecture in the neighborhood by providing a reduction in the gable pitch above the north side of the west elevation. This reduction lowers the overall height of the building by one and a half feet. Two-feet eaves are now included all around with four feet above the front, a four-foot, um, eve above the front entry. And, I forgot that I have a PowerPoint presentation that you could be looking at, uh, the elevations during this time.
Okay.
Go to, um, the second one. There we go. Uh, let's see. So the second, um, also, a second color has been introduced to the first floor, which enhances, um, the current horizontal presentation as opposed to the, uh, consistent white color that was proposed previously. The first, um, story exterior wall surfaces include new horizontal hardy siding in the, um, Athena blue color that you can see on the elevation on the screen. The second story exterior walls include, uh, vertical board and bat hardy siding painted white. Um, the metal roof is proposed for all roof surfaces. All elevations include a variety of window shapes and sizes. You could change the, um, to another elevation. Um, and they, they include a more horizontal orientation than previously submitted. The south elevation includes a horizontal window that was previously vertical, and the bottom of the window has been raised five feet above floor level. That's the elevation that you see on the screen. These specific renovations, revisions, were introduced to mitigate the potential privacy impacts to the adjacent residents to the south. Horizontal windows have also been included, um, above or on the garage door. We could go back, sorry, to the, uh, west elevation. Yeah. And these enhance the horizontal theme of the elevation. Additionally, the original pitched roof, uh, was restored in these, in this elevation as proposed to the previous, um, supplemental, and this gives the garage added height, which in effect reduces the overall height appearance, appearance and height of the main building, if that makes sense. Um, staff previously expressed concerns regarding the proposed architectural style enassing. These plans present a structure that blends with the neighborhood and architectural style with enhancing materials and colors that complete the design. The increased undulation relates with the established neighborhood, as does the reduction in the overall height. Additionally, the revision in window shape and height on the south elevation addresses the concern regarding privacy for the adjacent neighbor to the south. Regarding massing, staff previously provided a comparison of floor area ratio of the existing residential structures just within the project block on both sides of the street. With current revisions, staff finds that the floor area ratio hasn't changed significantly. Um, however, the way the proposed structure is now presented has changed, and the massing does not feel as, as much of a significant concern as previously did, even though, again, the floor area ratio is not, has not been reduced all that much. So in this staff report, staff has prepared a comparison of two-story, single-family homes in a wider range, as was requested by the Planning Commission. Unfortunately, minimal information was available between our city archive files and the County of Ventura Recorder's Office. Um, with acute, with accurate, um, figures regarding only three two-stories structures out of the eight that were seen during window surveys, it was difficult to see a trend in the floor area ratio. There are design standards in the municipal code by which all projects must be evaluated. These include, as we discussed at the February 15th meeting, context, continuity, scale, and architecture. Additional characteristics to, um, evaluate projects are also outlined in the general plan, land use element, and those include character and compatibility. Regarding context, although a rare two-story structure in the, um, it's a rare arc, two-story structure in the immediate vicinity, the style through the materials and colors and textures that are provided in this, um, renovation blends with the surrounding structures much more than the previous, um, previous plans did. And I have those with me, although they're not in your packet. Um, regarding continuity, the increased undulation on the second story alleviates the previous massing, and the proposed structure now blends more with the single-story surrounding structures. Regarding scale, the reduced overall height, the varied roof lines, and the undulating front elevation, and the introduction of the dark color on the first story, um, contribute to a softer transition from the, uh, or with the surrounding single-story structures. And regarding architecture, the revised plans add to the differentiating aspects of the neighborhood while also tying it in with the new horizontal presentation and, um, similar So with that, um, I do have here color and material board-
Color board.
-that I'd like to pass along. And as I said, I do have plans, if you'd like me to hold them up, um, for, of the-
The previous iteration, yeah.
Previous iteration, no? Okay. Um, and with that, staff is recommending approval of the project as submitted, and we do have the applicant and architect, I saw both come into, um, into the room this evening, if you have questions of them. Thank you.
Very good. Anything to add, Lucas? Oh, great. Uh, for those in the audience that are not familiar with our procedures here, we have two cases tonight dealing with specific locations in the city. We will have the staff introduce the case. Commissioners will ask clarifying questions if necessary. Then we'll hear from the applicant. Then we'll hear from the public. Then we'll close the public hearing portion and go into deliberations and vote on whatever. So we'll be doing that twice, and then we'll have a third item tonight, which is the Housing Advisory Committee, and there we'll have public comment again, but we don't have specific applicants. So we'll do all of the above, except, um, have an applicant in. So let's hear from the applicant on 1206 Ayers. Good evening, sir.
My name is John Fenske. I'm a senior project manager with Arch Type Architects, and, uh, first of all, I just would like to say thank you to staff for meeting with us, uh, and with the neighbor to go through and refine the design. We feel that we've come up with something that is, the design, uh, details definitely are more in keeping with the neighborhood. Um, if you look at our sheet A0E in your package, um, we've actually taken photographs of other-
Yes.
-properties in the neighborhood that we didn't have previously.
Lots of comps.
Um, yeah, and I believe that there's a, uh, one particular project, I think it's 918 Park, um, that it seems like the massing, um, and orientation and, and, uh, kind of the overall feel of that design is, is very much in keeping with what we presented this time around.
918 Park?
Yes. I believe it's at the bottom of the page in the middle. I think that that is representative of what we're trying to achieve with our design also, and that's, I believe, a couple of streets over from us. Um, I think that, you know, the staff has done a very good job of describing changes that we've made. I, I would just like to highlight that, um, our, our goal was, number one, to, um, have design details that are more in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, but also to recognize that the existing house is a ranch house, ranch-style house, and is more horizontal in nature. And so, um, the current design reflects a, a change in orientation of windows. Um, some of the finished materials are also helping to orient it in more of a horizontal fashion rather than a vertical fashion. And then also just increasing setbacks and, and decreasing the height of the north, uh, gable, uh, brings it down also, so it feels more horizontal. We appreciate your time, and please, uh, let us know if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Please, go ahead, sir.
I've got a couple. One, um, on this materials board here, it calls it out as being, um, bronze anodized, and it looks dead black to me, um, which is, which is interesting. In your, in your other, uh, things, you show the front door and the garage door looking very, very brown, um, and we don't, we don't have a, a separate color for the front door and the garage door.
It actually is the same as, um, it's supposed to be matching the roof material. Um, the window manufacturer is Western Windows, and what they call a dark bronze anodized is a dark brown, but depending on the light, how it's hitting it, it can appear very dark or can be, yeah, in direct sunlight, it appears more brown, so, it's, yeah.
John, go ahead.
Quick question. Um, you mentioned that you lowered the, the ridge, the overall height?
Yes, the ridge at the north, the gable at the north side of the, of the project-
Uh-huh.
...was lowered about a foot and a half.
About a foot and a half, okay, got you.
I've got another question. Uh, the drawing, the section drawing shows a family room with an existing fireplace. It looks like an existing fireplace, maybe I've got that wrong.
No, that, that's incorrect. Yeah, there is no existing fireplace.
And also, there appears to be a large volume in the middle of the house, which is open to the sky, I guess.
Well, to the second floor, at least.
Well, to the second floor, and I, I'm guessing that it's also open from the second floor to the roof. Is that true?
So-
Because there was no drawing which-
Yeah, that space has actually been reduced. Um, if you look at the original second floor plan, there is a, a boxed area that says "open to below." Um, that area's been reduced. We've actually moved that, the south side of the house has been compressed.
Yeah.
That's been moved more towards the north, um, and so that area actually now, um, part of the bedrooms actually overhang part of the kitchen area, which is below, and so that open area has been reduced.
I understand that, but can, can you answer the question? Is there a hole, is there a glazed hole in the roof that lets the light through?
No, there, there is one skylight on the east side, um, but there is not glazing above that area.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's, there's a skylight over that-
Here's the east.
-the family room area.
East elevation shows a skylight.
On the east side.
It's not that, it's not that elevation. I was trying to line that up and figure out how, you know, what your treatment was, so that volume on the first floor, which is open to the second floor, does not continue up to the roof. It, it stops at the second floor. And there's a, I assume, there's a flat ceiling there, is that right?
No, it's a vaulted ceiling.
Vaulted ceiling, okay.
John?
Oh, sorry, one more quick question. On, uh, attachment A3, um, one of the bedrooms, you mentioned that you changed the design of the window, um, and I believe last time we spoke that, that was a, a safety, a fire safety issue. And I just wanted to make sure that this is, obviously, it's okay to, to do that, it's still-
Right, so essentially what's happened is the, the window that's on the east side of that bedroom is now the egress window.
Okay, got you.
So we still meet code in that regard-
Okay.
...but we've also respected the privacy of the neighbor on the south side by just raising that up.
Right, right, okay, perfect, thank you.
I'm sorry, did either of you have a question for the applicant?
No.
Okay. I'm satisfied. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have the time for public comment, and we'll, oh, what do we call it? Open the public hearing? It's actually, the whole thing's a public hearing, I think, but for public, open for public comment. I have one speaker card, Kathy Richards.
I'm Kathleen Richards. I am the adjacent neighbor to the south, and, um, first I want to say I do appreciate the changes that were made to the south wall of the proposed structure, um, allowing for more privacy. Um, windows have a higher bottom sill now than they used to, and I appreciate that. Um, I, I appreciate the overall improvement in the appearance of this project. However, I am still concerned about the size of the overall project, even though staff, and I have read the staff report, there's a lot of words about how much the visual changes will make the mass seem smaller. But I think in real life, mass is mass, and it's like the elephant in the room. You can dress it up, but I think it's still as big as it was. And, uh, if you look at the floor area ratio, it's hardly changed at all, and in fact, the floor area ratio, um, is about two and a half times bigger than anything else on the street, and about one and a half times bigger than other second stories that have been called out in the staff report. So I'm, and I'm not just concerned about this for my street, although I am, I'm concerned about this for the whole town, because, um, this is bigger than anything that this group has approved under the current standards. And whatever you do tonight will become the new benchmark for second stories in this town. And I remember when the current rules were put in place, and it was based on a problem with a, uh, project at the corner of Lion and Eucalyptus, and as a result of that, we now have new design standards for second-story structures. Um, and I feel like this is still too big for the neighborhood and generalizing, too big for the town. Um, so I would like you to think about, and I know Commissioner Bennett mentioned this the last time this was before you, that, um, do you want to pull the trigger on that change? And I think that's an important thing to consider, and, um, I, I have nothing negative to say at all about my neighbors. They're wonderful neighbors. Um, this really does have to do with the mass of this project. Um, and I see that there's a lot of opportunities here for them to have the same house, but with less extravagant use of space. I, we'd all love to have lots of space, but given where this house is, it seems to me they ought to be more economical in their use of space. They still have the open atrium that's big enough to hold a bedroom. They have a master suite that's as big as a three-car garage. They have a wardrobe in the master suite that's big enough for a bedroom. Uh, there's just a lot of places where you could economize on the use of space and reduce the mass of the entire project. So I'm, I'm asking you to think about that when you vote.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone here present who wishes to speak on item three? Bill Miley, please come forward, sir.
Good evening, Bill Miley. Um, I have no information about the project, but I do have some personal experience about Lion and Eucalyptus.
Is that the street corner?
Yes.
Is that the street corner, Lion and?
Lion and Eucalyptus, yes, sir.
I remember when that big house was being proposed. That's huge, and it's really well, it's much larger than it should have been put on that. I even kind of remember the person who was the owner of that property. So Kathy mentioned that as an example. That's a terrible example. It's huge, massive. I drove down that street today and looked it up. It's practically sitting right on the corner, right on the edge of the street.
Right on the sidewalk, yeah.
So if that's an example of what this will be, I'm on Kathy's side. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. And is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak? I, I saw Renee's hand first, please come up.
Good evening. I don't often get a chance to speak at this meeting, um, but I can't help myself. I was over in Santa Barbara today, uh, for a dental appointment for my husband, and I was taken by the integration of apartment buildings within family residential areas. I was taken by how amazingly multifamily apartment buildings can fit into residential neighborhoods. It was, it's, my eyes opened up to new ways of seeing things when we can do things more densely and have more housing in smaller spaces, integrated with houses in neighborhoods. I think that should be a goal. I'm not saying anything about this project in particular, but I think that the more we can open up our vision about what is possible and not be limited by what we've always seen on our streets or our neighborhood, and have that be the guidepost, I would like to see the guidepost opened toward more new, different, density-type housing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I think I saw another hand raised. Uh, please come up and introduce yourself and tell us in three minutes what you're thinking.
Hi, I'm Catherine Donwin. I'm (laugh) one of the applicants, I suppose. Um, I didn't come in here planning to speak, and I didn't plan to get emotional about it, um, but it's incredibly frustrating. Um, you know, I came in here really excited to have, um, the approval, um, or have the recommendation, and potentially be able to move forward, because we did make, um, all of the adjustments and more that had been asked of us, um, and we were more than happy to do so. But it's frustrating to come back again, because this just isn't a frivolous decision to build, you know, some, some giant house at the expense of the community. This is pretty much our only opportunity, to be able to stay in the community that I was born in and love and want to continue to raise my children in. And I really hope that you consider that when you look at the plans and make your final decision, but I just wanted to make that clear, that because there aren't that many other options for families of our size, we're a family of six, without not counting my parents, who are the owners of that property currently, um, we're a family of six, and there's nowhere affordable in Ojai for us to go. There's no apartments, there are no condominiums, there are definitely no single-family homes that are affordable to us, so this is kind of our last-ditch effort to be able to stay in a community that I've been a part of for literally my entire life, and I'm still a very large part of. I helped open a preschool here at the beginning of the year that I exclusively volunteer my time for. I do all of their books, I'm the treasurer there. I spend a lot of time there. I volunteer at Topa Topa, where three of my children attend, so this is a community that I want to continue to be a part of. Um, and I just want to make, make that clear, that this isn't some kind of, um, investment attempt or something that we're looking to flip a house and then sell it, quite the opposite. investment attempt or something that we're looking to flip a house and then sell it, quite the opposite. We want something that we can be in for a very, very long time, and that our children can be in for a very, very long time. And if setting a new precedent means that more families are able to do this, I, I personally know several families, friends of mine, who live multi-generationally, and it's the only way that they've been able to stay in this community. And I think it's something that we're going to see more of, and I think having a precedent set, that that is something that we want to see as a community is keeping families here. I think that's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Please come forward, give us your name and, and your thoughts.
My name's John Wellborn, I live at 1302 Ayers Avenue. Thank you.
Got it, Alex, thanks.
We have a blue light special in aisle three.
Start again. Start the timer again.
I've been a neighbor, I'm at 1302 Ayers Avenue. This is probably one of the greatest families on our block, I just love them. They are going to be the future of Ojai. They're bringing kids, they're bringing families, they're filling up our schools. And they are, they are compliant with everything that you've asked them to do. I mean, you know, I've seen the struggle, you know, and going back, and they've done everything they can to be compliant with this.
Which is why we didn't make a decision the first time.
I totally agree, and I understand completely. But I've seen the new design, everyone I know on the block thinks it's absolutely fantastic, it looks great. They've done everything they can to for Kathy's privacy, you know, they're bending over backwards to do everything they can for our neighborhood, they're wonderful people. I can't wait to get the kids on the block. But when I hear things like the closets are too big, and this, those are all just opinions. I mean, who's to say how big a closet can be? I have a bathroom that's about six by two, and if we tried to build that now in Ojai, they'd probably not let you build it. I mean, we live in, you know, the houses are kind of funny. But I just hope you'll let these people do, you know, it's so, it's such a beautiful design. We're looking for more families in Ojai, we want to fill up the schools. These people are the heart, they will be the heart of Ojai. When I'm dead and gone, they're going to be here, and they're going to make Ojai strong. And I love these people.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, come forward, give us your name and your thoughts, please.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Anita Downey, and I'm the applicant and homeowner at 1206 Ayers Avenue.
Remember you from last time.
Yes. We have lived there, home for 30 years, this is our family home. We know all our neighbors who have lived there 25 years or more, they've become like a family to us. Our daughter-in-law and son-in-law want to raise their kids here, and the only way they can do that is for us to be able to make it happen. And that's what we did, that's what we started back in 2021, in August of 2021. It took us a long time, and we spent a lot of money to get the design right that meets and stays with our neighborhood. We have spoken to all our neighbors, we have shared what we are doing, and they're all very happy for us. And we have done everything that the commission has asked us to do. We have done everything that the planning department has asked us to do. We have made several designs before we even met with the planning commission last time, and then we went back and made additional changes. And this is the only way we can keep our kids here in Ojai. We do not, she's our only daughter, we don't have any more children, these are the only grandchildren that we have. And the only way they can stay with us is we can make it happen. And my husband and I are fortunate and blessed enough to make that happen for these kids. And we really hope you consider that, making, when you make your decision. We have complied, we have done everything that Kathy wanted us to do, we have taken off the window, and we raised it up so we don't have any issue of privacy. We have reduced the height of the house, we are lower than what the city allows us to do. We have kept all that in consideration, we are very cognizant of our, of our neighbors and our friends. We are not going to do anything that is an eyesore and that is going to stand out ugly. And everybody, all our neighbors, except for Kathy, is in favor, you know, of, and they're loving, and they see our grandkids run around and they love it, you know? And so we, we are just doing our best as we can, when we can, when, when we are still young enough to do it, my husband and I, for our kids. And we want them to live here, and hopefully this will be a generational home where their kids and their grandkids will be able to come and live there. So that's the only thing I can ask of you, you know, and I really, really hope. We have spent a lot of time, a lot of money in just getting the design. You know, and we just, we just hope this turns out to be a positive thing for us and that the commission makes the right decision for us. And we thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here present who wishes to speak? Please come forward, give us your name and your thoughts.
Hi, I'm Kathy Lyle, I'm on the corner of Pleasant and Ayers, across from Kathy. I hadn't seen the, the new design, I think it's beautiful. I think it will increase the value of our houses in the neighborhood. I, I think it's beautiful. I've seen the other house that Kathy was talking about, and it's an eyesore. It's ugly, it's right next to the street, it's real tall, this is nothing like that. I think it's a beautiful design, I like the two colors. And to me, it's none of my business, really. I just come to support them because it's not my house. You know, it'd be different if she was decreasing the value of our houses, but they're not. They're going to increase the value of our neighborhood. So I, I don't see any reason to turn it down. And I, I don't know how families live in this town anymore. It, it's so expensive, and for, for, I can see more families doing this. You know, our, our schools are closing because we don't have enough students going to public school anymore because everybody's going to private school. It's terrible. I heard Topa Topa was going to close, that's terrible. You know? There's, all their kids, Katie's always involved, the mother is always involved in the city. You know, she, she ran on the last election. I, I mean, we don't want people like this leaving our city. She's a great, the whole family is a great thing for our, our city that we don't want to lose. And I don't think what they're asking is too much. I, I think it's a beautiful design, and I, I'm so happy that they want to do this in our neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this item? Oh.
Oh my gosh.
Our city council liaison.
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I just wanted to say, this is in my district, and I am in support of this project as well. I love the idea of having a multi-generational family living here, and I also know that street. I've walked it when I was, when I was campaigning, and I walk it just walking my dog throughout the neighborhood. And, and I think that there is a lot of, there are people upgrading their homes in that area. There are people working on their yards, doing some incredible things. And so I think this would really fit within some of the developments that are naturally taking place there. So I wanted to just speak in support.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here who wishes to speak? Alex, do you have anyone in the waiting room with a hand raised?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we will close the public comment portion of this and come back to the commission for deliberation. Thoughts?
I'll start. I see this divided into two parts. One part is what our actual job is, is to look at design standards. And I think the planning department went through context, continuity, scale, architecture, character, compatibility. And I don't see how we could decide for whatever subjective or emotional reasons about how communities should be or that sort of stuff to go against this, because it's, fits our standards. And it's housing, we're not supposed to be using subjective standards anyway. Secondly, I looked at these, the size of the houses. The only comparison we had on page six of eight, they only had five houses that actually had the numbers for the size of them. And one of them's actually on Ayers Avenue, which has got a larger size, five, 3,005,20. And if you think about floor area ratios, and I think Renee was talking about, if you go to places like Santa Barbara, you know, having more floor area ratio means you're putting more people in the same, in a smaller area. More people walk, more people, so it's actually more of a sustainable, smart growth strategy to have higher floor area ratios. So I think from that standpoint, I don't think we have any choice, that's just my view. And I support that. I, I do want to address the, the other issue, though. I have a chart for our, our housing element, page 16. This is the age of the housing stock. Between 19, so before 1950, approximately 20% of our housing stock was built, before 1950. Between 1950, and this house was built in 61, and 2000, excuse me, 1990, 73% of our housing stock was built.
So between 30 and 60 years old.
Yes. Since 1990, only 6.5% of our housing stock, that's 33 years. That's 225 houses. So the problem we are facing, essentially, we were building houses for families to live in. And some reason, I, I know some of them, but we stopped, we said, no more. And that's why our housing prices are going up, that's why we're losing kids. There are no places for people to live, we just haven't built enough. I'm not talking about building out, but building in. So I think it's important to think about a city, and I hope we do build some more houses, you know, low-impact, smaller houses in, in the infill. But our houses that were built in 1960 for different households and a different demographic has got to evolve. You know, I just think the city, you can't just freeze-frame a city and say, we're going to stay the same way we were in 1990 and not change in 33 years. We're just going to end up being a community of wealthy retirees and not have any kids, not have any diversity, not have anything. So I think this is a great move to have a multi-generational family living. I mean, that's something we used to have in my parents' days, I mean, we never had that, but my mother described it in great detail. I walked that street canvassing, just like Rachel did, a couple times, and I drove it today. And even though the houses are similar size, there is already some diversity there, I'm starting to see. And we're going to start seeing more and more people wanting to craft their houses to their families, to diverse families, and I think that's a good thing. So we need to evolve, we need to allow diversity, and diversity makes for more thriving. I mean, we're supposed to be an artistic community. Who's to say, does an artistic community have every house looking exactly the same? That's not artistic to me. So, so everything I said after I talked about the design views, it's just my opinion.
Sounds like two thumbs up.
It's got nothing to do with this decision, it's just, so I just wanted to make clear that. I think from our decision point, they meet the design standards, and I don't think we have any choice. Thanks.
Judy?
Well, I largely agree with, with the opinions that were just expressed. I am very pleased with the fact that the applicant and the architect have really gone out of their way to incorporate all of the changes that the commission asked them to do. And it's a very nice-looking design, at the end of the day, I think this exercise was very worthwhile. The fact that you're increasing density on infill is a good thing. City needs it, we sure need those kids. So I'm in favor of it.
John?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with both of you on the points that you mentioned. I'll just bring up a couple more. I wanted to highlight the multi-generational, I think that's something that obviously we'll see more trends, I think, in that direction. So it's a great point. I also appreciate staff doing the analysis. I know that we didn't get all of the metrics of the additional homes in the neighborhood, but the ones that we got are pretty comparable. So I, I don't think that this is an example of having Lyon and Eucalyptus. Lyon and Eucalyptus was coming an anomaly, it, it was built with, the setbacks were not right. There was just a lot of stuff that was wrong with that certain, that project. I don't think this, yeah, the massing was a, was a little bit different. I don't think this project fits that mold, I don't think this is going to set a standard. I think it's going to fit in with a lot of the other homes in the, in the neighborhood. And then I, I appreciate the accommodations that had been made that we recommended during our last meeting here, so that was very good to see with the height, bringing, height coming down and the windows and and actually bringing that, that, the, the floor space back a little bit, so there's more, so the neighborhood from the south can actually have a better view, and so the massing is actually smaller. So I, I do agree also with Jeffrey, I think this is very subjective versus objective conversation. I think the objective points have been met, and it's within our, our standards, so it really comes down to kind of a subjective opinion. So I'm, I'm basically in favor.
Okay, Jamie?
Well, I disagree with everyone. One, I want to say how appreciative I am for the homeowner and architect's willingness to revisit the project. It is, it's a better project than it was before, as it usually is when it goes through a process like this. However, I also want to thank the neighbor, and I know there's tremendous personal support for this family, who, everyone likes this family. And so it's very hard to get up at a public hearing and say, I like this family, I'm the neighbor, and I think it's the wrong thing to do. And so I, I, you know, it requires discourse to get to the right answer, and I realize discourse costs money, and I'm sorry that it has cost money already to the homeowners who are trying to make the additions. But I still believe that the volume of this house is, with one exception, on a very long road. Ayers is a really lovely street, but is almost twice as big, or twice as big, as the average house in the, in the neighborhood. I heard, I said, I said, twice. Now that is, I came here, you know, I really kind of, well, I've been here for 28 years or whatever. I came here from a neighborhood where I watched, one block north of us, a beautiful, single-story, single-family house neighborhood get McMansionized. House by house, they doubled the size of the houses there. It doesn't lower the cost of housing, Jeffrey, it, it increased the cost of housing, because now everyone can take the same plot of land.
It lowered the cost of housing.
So, I'm, so, who did, I'm sorry.
No, he was talking about density.
Density, well, see, I look at it and say, actually...
Doesn't change the density necessarily.
It doesn't really change the, the density is a number of, of units on a, on a block.
It's all still single-family residents.
Or it can be people.
It's still single-family residents, but it's, it is now a more costly one. And, and what may happen, and I would posit that it will happen, having seen it happen, is that people will start buying these single-story houses, tear them down and build a new house on the lot that has twice the volume in there. And that's not going to drive costs down, because all of a sudden people are going to say, if I can get a 3,000-square-foot house in this neighborhood, it's, it's worth more. And so I am frankly concerned about the idea that somehow this is going to solve our housing cost problem. It's going to take one house... cost problem, it's going to take one house and add a number of bedrooms to that single house, it's not going to reduce the cost of housing in the neighborhood.
So if I can respond to that, if you don't mind.
Let me finish, and then you can have all, you can, I'll yield everything to you.
Just have one question that I want to respond to.
But what concerns me is, I do still believe that the massing of this structure, there isn't going to be anybody who's going to put the, be able to hold the brakes on, in this neighborhood, once this house gets built, for the tearing down, and everyone is going to come with a, with a beautiful example like this, of a wonderful house, and we're going to wind up with a, a neighborhood of a very different density, and actually, a very different population, and I would, I would posit, not necessarily more school-age kids. I don't think anyone can predict that. But I think I can predict that once you, once you allow the volume of a house to double on a lot, and everything else is approximately the same, except for maybe one or two outliers, you open, you open Pandora's box, and, and it sort of goodbye Ayers as we know it. And Ayers is a great, great block, and, you know, it, it does, it does have retired people on it, we don't want them to leave. It does have young families on it, we don't want them to leave. But if we start putting five, five-bedroom houses on that, on that street, it'll be people who are looking for five-bedroom houses, who are going to be buying the houses, housing stock on that street, and the price will be higher.
Let me just address the point about, just, the only way we're going to reduce the price of housing is build more houses. This also, people that support ADUs does exactly the same thing that you're talking about, because ADU adds to the size of the house and the value of it. So from that standpoint, we should be against ADUs.
Jeffrey, if I can?
Yeah.
Actually, I thought and tried to figure out, how would you put an ADU into this house? And the answer's not easily, because I kept thinking it was, it was going to be an ADU.
Well, we have ADUs in, in garages and over garages, you know.
I'm saying, this design is not one that takes us in that direction, that's all.
I wanted to just comment, if I could, on the McMansion piece. I know that that's a, that's a concern, but I also feel like there's already a trend, kind of, I don't want to say a trend in that direction, but we've seen it in that area already, there's already, there's multiple homes in that area that already meet that standard. Seems like every time somebody does a redesign of their home, they're adding a story, and if they're adding a story, they're adding square footage. So I don't think that this is going to open Pandora's box, I think that, I think that if there's, I think the box has been open for a long time. I think it's just, it's just part of the nature of that neighborhood, it's part of the nature of housing, it's part of the nature of not having a whole lot of land to build on anymore, so people have to build up.
Okay, thank you. I like having the last word. Those of you who have been around me for a while know that one of my, one of my basic thoughts is, you should be able to do what you want with your own stuff, as long as it doesn't bother the neighbors. And if it bothers the neighbors, go talk to the neighbors, work it out. I think what we have seen here is that we have worked it out. And from that point of view, I'm in favor of the project, I think it looks good, I also think it shows a great deal of care about the neighbors and the neighborhood, and that's a big plus in my book. Third, I have personal experience with a multi-generational family, until my father-in-law and mother-in-law died twelve and fifteen years ago, I lived in a multi-generational house. And it was a wonderful thing to have, and then when our kids and our grandchildren would come to visit, we had as many as four generations in the house for short periods. And the interplay was something that I will never forget, and something that I wish everyone could experience. One of my favorite pictures in the whole world, and it's on the bulletin board in my office, is our oldest granddaughter, age two, with her great-grandmother in the bakery. A little, two little pigtails, it brings me to tears when I see it. So I sympathize with the thought of having a multi-generational household. I also like the design, and I'm, I'm ready to turn a thumbs up for this one. Do we have some more discussion?
If, if not, two things. A correction on attachment A, page two.
Page six.
Section three.
Our editor.
The editor is back at it.
The teacher.
What can I say? I think that in the second to the last line there, you meant to say ninety-four square feet?
I'm sorry, what page is this?
You're on page two.
I'm on page two, attachment A.
Okay.
Whereas, section three, second to the last line.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And the other thing is, if the discussion is over, then I would like to move for acceptance of this project.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Did you have a correction on section three? I'm not sure.
It's missing square feet.
It's just got ninety.
The increase in footprint of the existing, no, okay, great, square feet. And while we're, while we're picking nits, because like you, I pick nits, the second recitation or recital on page one refers to an incomplete letter. Did we fix that? You, you did a really good job of wording something similar in item four. This is attachment A, page one, second recital, says the, the community development department issued an incomplete letter. And you had rewritten, you had written the same thought, I think, more clearly on the next item.
Yes.
Can we make those two look alike?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second. Alex, will you please call role then on item three?
Quilisi?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Bennett?
No.
Trent?
Yes.
You have your approval?
Thank you.
Thank you. Wasn't our doing, it was yours. But, and thank you for working with staff, spend more time with them now, and get all the paperwork in order. When the weight of the paper equals the weight of the applicants, you'll probably be done.
I didn't say it like, everyone else said it, but I, yes, definitely the, what the staff did in working with everybody, it's like a model of what we want to resolve problems.
Yeah, good job, guys.
So I didn't, I should have done that, I was more anxious to say other things. I should have complimented you for that.
No, you guys did a great job.
You may not be looking for it, but you deserve it.
You'll get it when you don't do it.
All right. So we'll, we'll, we'll pause here for a moment or two while, while the room clears, unless you, if you'd like to stay and hear the next case, you're welcome. If you, if you want to go home and celebrate, then please have at it.
Thank you so much, thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, let's go on to item four, a design review permit for property at four-six-nine East Ojai Avenue. Maura?
Thank you, Chair Quilisi and Commissioners, this is a design review permit twenty-three dash zero-zero-one for a proposed construction of an approximately seven-hundred-square-foot shade trellis on a twenty-three-hundred-sixty-four-square-foot outdoor patio for an existing outdoor dining facility on a private property located at four-sixty-nine East Ojai Avenue. As discussed with the last project, design standards in the Ojai Municipal Code, by which all projects must be evaluated, include context, continuity, scale, and architecture. Context? Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have announced, yes.
I wonder.
Italian high five.
Are you insulting Italians?
Yeah. I don't know.
Why?
If you are one, it's okay.
Yours too, okay, good for you. Commissioner Bennett has recused himself because he has a financial interest in the business that occupies this property. And so he will be with us, but he will not be deliberating and voting on this case. And at the conclusion of the case, he will return to the front desk and will move on with other business. So, please, go ahead.
Thank you. So again, we're at four-sixty-nine East Ojai Avenue, and the proposal is for an approximately seven-hundred-square-foot shade trellis on a twenty-three-hundred-eighty-four-square-foot outdoor patio. There's existing, an existing outdoor dining facility located, located in this area. There are design standards in the Ojai Municipal Code that we discussed in the last project, and as for all design review permits, and they are context, continuity, scale, and architecture. Continu, or text is where new structures should employ materials, colors, textures, styles, building mass, style, all those things that are compatible with the architectural character and form in the surrounding area. Continuity would be with the streetscape with regards to setbacks, to have continuity with your surrounding properties. Scale is with regard to height transitions between the property in question and the neighboring properties. Architecture is required, that architecture that piques interest as opposed to monotonous forms or elevations. Additionally, pursuant to section ten dash two-point-zero-zero-three of the Municipal Code, any exterior alteration that modifies the structure, architectural details, or visual characteristics of any property located in the C1, which is commercial, zone, is subject to review and consideration by the Planning Commission. The existing seating in the area of the proposed trellis includes five tables with two chairs each, and four picnic tables providing four to six seats each. The seating arrangement is not proposed to be revised with the inclusion of this shade trellis. The shade trellis will offer shade in addition to the existing tree that is in the patio area and is not proposed, will not be affected by the installation of the trellis. The trellis offer, also will offer consistent protection from other weather conditions. The addition to the design standards include, included above, this project is located within the Ojai redevelopment area statement of theme. Guidelines for this area include that new construction and remodeling in the theme area should have an architectural theme in keeping with historic downtown Ojai, which is generally defined as mission architecture. Alternatively, however, when a project is in an addition to an existing structure, the addition should architecturally blend with that existing structure, and not be the mission theme if the existing structure is not. In this case, the architectural style of the existing structure is mission, it has a tile roof, stucco walls, and wood trim. The proposed trellis material is wood with a semi-transparent chestnut brown stain. I'm going to pass around the materials board while I'm describing it. If there are steel posts instead of wood, then the color application would be rusted steel color with a clear coat protectant. The canvas shade color, or cover is fire-resistant canvas in a terracotta color. Regarding context as previously defined, and in keeping with the Ojai redevelopment area statement of theme, the shade trellis follows both sets of guidelines in that the structure is a color and material included in the existing mission architectural, on architecture on site, as well as included in the materials provided in the Ojai redevelopment area statement of theme, desired materials providing a unified design character. Regarding continuity, the existing commercial structure is setback approximately sixty feet from the property line, fronting on East Ojai Avenue, and then there's also a detached structure, and that structure is setback approximately eight feet.
The antique, the antique gas station office.
Exactly.
Or winery now.
Well.
The structure is create an L shape, providing for this existing outdoor area where the shade trellis is proposed and the tree exists. The shade trellis, the location of the shade trellis would offer relief from the intensity at the public sidewalk. Regarding scale, the proposed trellis nestles into this existing patio area and is designed to blend into the site and not overstate its position in relation to the neighboring development. The shade structure will add an element of design while blending in with the existing outdoor dining, and that would be referring to the architectural part of the requirements of the Municipal Code. The style and materials of the shade structure complement the established outdoor dining area and associated restaurant, blending in as if it had always been there, as you see in your, in the elevations. And if you could go to the next, is there another picture? There you go. So based on the project description and site layout, staff is recommending approval as proposed and presented to you tonight. And we have the restaurateur with us tonight, Lawrence, Mr. Lawrence Nicola, and his designer, if you have any questions of him as well.
Okay. Any questions with staff?
Does the existing lighting go under the trellis? Is the trellis above those strings of lights that show up on the?
I am going to let the applicant answer that question.
Okay. And then my second question was, where the rain gutter delivers its water to?
The rain, I'm going to have the applicant speak to that as well, however, I do want to say that, I know that the rain would be going north towards, towards the sidewalk, in that, in that direction, not towards the back corner.
Because that would be against the existing building.
Right. And that's why the gutter is there, actually, because the, the structure is going to be adjacent to the west property line.
Doesn't the property at that point, it's not strictly level, is it? Isn't it running just a tiny bit?
To the south, yes.
North, and, and running lower toward the south, so.
Everything along that side.
Rain sounds like it's going to be a big puddle.
I'm, I'm going to let the applicant speak to that, thanks.
The trellis, the heights of it, the highest height, looks like thirteen point three, I guess.
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Where, how low does it start when it goes away from that building? What's that height? I don't see that on the chart.
It's nine feet eleven inches.
And how tall is that building next to it? Do you know?
Eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet? Okay, okay.
Are you speaking about the, the neighbor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And how tall is the wine place there, that little building?
Little building up front?
Little building.
The beverage building for this, this establishment?
Existing.
I do not have the height of that.
Okay. And the, it looks like the extension of the trellis and the extension of that building are the same, at the same distance from the street, is that correct?
They are both setback the same distance, yes.
Okay, okay, that's all I want to know.
John, any clarifying questions for staff?
No?
No, no, not that, not that I can think of.
I just have one. The existing tree that's shown is occupying the middle of the open space next to the trellis, is that a protected tree?
That is not.
Do we need a tree permit for working in the drip line?
That is not a protected, a protected tree.
Okay. I guess I do have, I do have one other. As I walk, and I walk frequently in that area, there is, there is currently a white canvas shade there. And I, I haven't looked closely enough to see what the east end of it is fastened to that keeps it from just falling to the ground, but it's supported by something. So we're, we're, what we're seeing is a proposal for a more permanent structure to hold a canvas hold a canvas topper, basically.
This trellis would be, yes, a more permanent structure.
Okay, okay. That's all I have. Let's, let's hear from the applicant then. Please come forward, sir, give us your name and your thoughts. Ooh, a twofer.
Hi. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name's Alonso Banuelos, I'm the designer of the structure, and this is Larry, the owner of the restaurant. And, you know, we just listen to your questions and any concerns that you guys have, we're more than welcome to answer them, so.
Can I interject something real quick, just to explain a little bit? You know, the, we really took, we have a beautiful patio, and it's really kind of a nice place to be, and we didn't want to, we, we needed to get something that we could stick, get out of the rain, or, or, we don't have a big problem with sun because the building's right there. But we wanted to do something that was really architecturally beautiful and in context with, with the building, but most of the year, that will probably be no top, and just a sco- the, the structures going up into the trees to look like really beautiful. And then during the cold months, we'll cover it up. But it's, we wanted to have the structure look like it was there, and look beautiful into the tree, because the tree is one of the main components of our, our patio dining. We don't want to obstruct anybody's view of the mountains, and of our, the, the building is Mission style, and it's, and that's what we love about it. So, we're trying to make something that's complimentary, that keeps us out of the rain once in a while. So, this last four months, I mean, December, January, February, March, were pretty tough.
So, this wasn't designed for shade?
Well, shade and...
Sir, please speak into the mic.
Because I, I would think you'd keep it up all the time for shade, because it gets hot.
Am I misunderstanding? Do you, are you saying that this canvas topper will be there sometimes and not there sometimes?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we don't know what it looks like.
So, it'd be an open framework sometimes, and this open, and, and a framework with a canvas topper sometimes?
When would you not need it?
Probably in the beautiful months where the weather's really nice. I mean, I mean, we have the tree, and we have, do we do have quite a bit of shade.
Sir, please speak into the mic.
I think it's architecturally beautiful, and I think it's going to enhance the whole area.
Can you, excuse me? Can you, can you come closer to the, to the microphone, so that?
Enhance the whole area, but when it's, when it's inclement, it'll be covered. And I think that that's, it's, it's meant to look like it was there, and, and, and it looks, you know, I think architectural elements of, that can enhance that design that we have is important, and to keep it, and to keep it in context, not do something that's going to look weird there, so.
Let me ask a design question. It looks like the color of the canvas was meant to match the color of the building in the back? Is that somewhat true?
The roof?
Yeah.
It's a terracotta color, yes.
Yeah, okay.
It actually blends with it, yes.
So, what was your, you know, design concept of this? What did you envision that, because you said, you know, you really wanted to make it a great architectural design. What, conceptually, where you designed it?
We just didn't want to put just any trellis up there, but we actually wanted to have a slope on it so that you can actually see mountains without just covering it, so that when you're looking, you can see the mountain view, Topa Topa Mountains, and not just have just some flat, you know, it is flat, but it has a little of a slope, so we can see the mountains. We didn't want to block the mountain view.
So, the color, from what we're looking at here, it looks like the colors kind of matched the color scheme of your restaurant?
Of the roof, yes, in the restaurant, yes, which is the Mission style, a terracotta roof, which you have in, in the wood.
Okay.
So, another quick question, or are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, sorry. Just two, two questions. In the, in the designs on A.05, you have the posts, so have you guys made a decision on the posts? Is it steel or wood, or?
We have not yet, and we're going to be making that decision pretty soon, once it maybe be steel.
Okay.
Yeah, just, so we don't, for structural, to keep it strong and...
For sure.
And what color would the steel be, that, this one here?
Yeah, it would be like a rusted steel color.
Oh, okay, okay. So, that's why we have those two things? One would be if you did it by wood, and if you wanted to do it by...
And the beams would be wood, that would be the color of the wood, so.
I see, the beam, okay, okay.
And if we were to use this post as wood, that would be the wood color too, yes.
And then, just a quick question, on the canvas top, did you guys think about fading? Because eventually that's going to fade, it's going to turn.
Yes, we understand that, that's why we would probably take it down during springtime and summertime, and then have it reinstalled professionally during the cold time, like rain.
All right. And have you guys, did you think about white?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What, have you thought about white?
Not really, no.
Probably the same ones we have now.
Yeah, so you have white now, yeah.
Sliding, we do have string lights that we...
Oh, no, no, the, I meant white color versus the terracotta on the canvas.
Well, white would get dirty so quickly, and with the tree, the, the, it has a lot of leaves on it, it definitely would not be white, and within one year, it'd be...
All trees shed in some fashion.
Yes, yes.
I think white would be too modern. I think ours is more like a rusted, tender ranchy. When we built that ranch fence out front with the DG, and the, the lemons growing there, it's kind of, it looks, it looks like it could be out on a ranch, so this, this works well with that. It kind of, we, he calls it the chicken, it's a half of a barn, you know?
Keeps that outdoor theme, yeah.
And that one bar, that half of it's still there, that's structurally sound.
Right, okay.
Could you address the water issue, please?
The water? Yes, we have rain gutters on the side, so any water runoff, and we would have a spout that would go directed towards the street. So, it is a property that has a lower spot, you hadn't mentioned, that goes back towards the south. And so, we could direct the water towards the front of the street.
But you're directing the water to an area that's basically going uphill, slightly?
Would probably go to the back and put it in a gutter, so it'd be a downspout. Now, would you say that we've kind of directed the downspout towards the street, towards the sidewalk? Or if you wanted to, we could put a, I don't know, I guess we can put a, sometimes they direct the, underneath the sidewalk, and where the water goes directly into the gutter.
So, I, I think what she was maybe pointing out is that if you want the water in the gutter to run to the north, you've got to have some drop in the gutter to the north.
It's, the, the structure's going to be level.
Right.
So, it may go, have some slope going back, but the, the structure itself will be level. So, we can, we, if, with a little adjustment there, we can get the water going to the front.
Okay, so you're going to be slightly farther above ground level at the south end of this structure than you are at the north end?
Yeah.
If it's going to be level?
Right.
Okay. And if it's level, then it just fills up and you let the downspout work.
The downspout is going to be spilling the water out onto the sidewalk?
Yes, out to the street.
I really like your idea about getting it under the sidewalk and out to the street.
That could cause a slip and fall kind of hazard if you're just putting water on the sidewalk.
Right, right, we understand that, so we can address that, yes.
Okay. And the other question was, the lights that are there, are they under what, where the trellis would be?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Oh, sorry, one more. I apologize. You have six-by-six wood posts, beams, that's going to, would you go steel? It's going to be the same six-by-six?
Probably to keep with it, otherwise it'd look too skinny, I think, yeah. We would stick with six-by-six, whether it's steel or wood, yes.
All the beams on the fence are six-by-six, so it would be...
Okay, six-by-six.
That'll be consistent.
On our toothpicks, we don't like that.
Yeah, I got you. Okay, cool.
I have, I have one remark, remaining question. Before coming back to Ojai, I lived in Ohio for a number of years. And the freeway overpasses, the newer ones there, have this kind of a color to them, but it's a special kind of steel in those, in those big overhead pieces. And I'm, I'm sure you know, if you pick the wrong kind of steel, or you pick some kind and you paint it, and then it dries out, you either are going to get flaking or cracking in the outer layer. But these overpasses that I saw had a new composition, at least for the outer layer, and it was exactly the same size, rusted, as it was new. So, it never had to be painted, it never had to be coated. I don't know if you've seen it, but you could talk to Ohio Department of Transportation if you're interested. And my question for staff is, if that, if they found something they liked that never took any maintenance because it was just there, does that constitute a big change to the steel posts that they have here with a, with a clear coat on it?
No, not at all.
Yeah, okay. I, I thought not, but I was looking for some confirmation.
I want to go back to the rain issue, because I'm just looking at the design here. So, the roof slants down towards the other building?
Yes.
It's eight feet from the road?
Eight and a half feet.
Eight and a half feet. In between, there's a fence there, too, which is, I don't know how many feet that's from there. So, I don't see how rain is naturally going to just go to the street unless somehow it's diverted there.
Right.
The other, it seems to me, another option would be to put plants under there that just captured the water.
We have, we do have at five feet...
Step over closer to the mic, if you would, sir.
Five feet back, we have a planter box in there.
Yeah, I see it, but if it was put right where the water would come off?
Yeah, so you naturally rain.
It would just drop into those plants rather than go to the street.
And drown them.
Well, you know, we don't get rain that often.
Were you not there for the last several months?
I don't know, it just, it just seemed like you'd have to construct something to get...
Well, we have a...
Because otherwise, you'd be all in your, where people sit there would be like, you know, you'd be dropping right, you know, into the middle of your place there, so I don't know.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Any more questions for the applicant? Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I have no speakers cards for this item. Renee, come up.
My name's Renee Roth, and every time I drive by Ojai Roadie, I look at the restaurant, and it is filled and brimming with people. And I think it's so exciting to see that we have a restaurant there, and lots of people like to go there, and it's got the biggest outdoor eating venue of any place in Ojai, except for the park. So, I think it's a wonderful project, I think it's a great project. My husband and I, when we were traveling in Greece, and I, I captured a design idea which was doing the same thing. You take canvas, and you roll it between planks to give yourself shade when you need the shade, and you can roll the planks back to areas that are getting shade from the tree, so you can have flexible designs with that kind of a shade structure. I think it's a great project. I love the idea. The only question I have is, down in Ventura, we were eating outside, and the health department had come in and removed all of those propane heating tanks, because they said it was a health...
True heater?
Yeah, those outdoor heater things, and I don't know if they have outdoor heaters there or not, but I, I just wonder how that might impact the, but they'll deal with the health department on that one, I'm sure, whatever they have to do. But anyway, I think it's a great project, I love the idea.
Thank you. Anyone else here present wish to speak on this item? Alex, anyone in the waiting room with a hand raised?
No, sir.
All right. Then we're going to close the public comment portion of this and deliberate as a four-member commission. John, your thoughts?
I mean, I think, I like, I like the idea of it keeping with the overall theme of the, the Mission style and the, the, the outdoor type of ranch style theme. I like the color choices, and I'm not opposed to the steel versus wood, you know, I think that's probably a better course long-term as far as, you know, stability, it probably makes the most sense. Worry about the color a little bit, because that's going to be tough to get that color right. But I, I like the idea of the wood, I like the height, and I think it's going to be a, a nice value add to the restaurant.
Judy?
I also like the project and, and am inclined to vote for it. I would like to add a condition that they solve, the prospect of water spilling into the sidewalk.
Jeffrey?
I like the design, I think it, it's in keeping with the structures they have, and, you know, enhances the outdoors there. And I agree with Judy, I think that, working with, with our planning staff, that, that part should be worked out as to making sure that when water does come off, it doesn't just go running straight into the street. I think there are solutions.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, excuse me. And so, I would add that as a condition.
Okay.
I agree to it as a condition.
And I, I, I agree with what we've heard here from the other commissioners. My only misgiving on the project is the idea of dumping a lot of water right onto the sidewalk, because I think we do have a, a potential pedestrian safety issue. And so, I would like to add a condition as well, I would agree. A condition in the direction of come back and talk with staff, and come up with a solution that does not directly dump rainfall from this structure onto the sidewalk, to, to prevent any slip and fall hazards for passing pedestrians in inclement weather. Because I think people are going to come and patronize this place when it's raining.
When they have a roof, yeah.
And particularly when they have a nice, solid roof there. So, I think we need to deal with that one problem, and I will, I'd, I would leave the wording to staff to figure out something that's reasonable, and to the city attorney to make sure it's legal, and then I'd be ready to vote on it.
You need a motion?
We do.
I move we accept this project.
As amended?
As, as, as conditioned, yes.
As conditioned.
I just have a question on the amendment.
Sure.
Does that mean that they have to come back before the body and get that piece approved?
No. Just work with, work with staff to solve that, solve that one problem.
I'll second it, under those conditions.
Very good. Any more discussion? All right. Alex, please call roll on item number four.
Colisi?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Come work with staff, go do good things. Next on the agenda is item five, a discussion of the creation of a housing advisory committee. This is an ad hoc committee of the Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
And, and for the record, Alex, Commissioner Bennett has returned to the deliberation side of the desk.
Yes. So, good evening, commissioners, my name is Lucas Seibert, Community Development Director for the City of Ojai. The item you have before you tonight is a discussion of the creation of a housing advisory committee. Just thirty seconds of history, is on April 11th of this year, City Council moved by Mayor Pro Tem Francina, and seconded by Councilmember Lang to allow the Planning Commission to create a housing advisory committee. And if to do so, then I also identified that this advisory committee would be without staff time or support. With that, it's, it's really up for deliberation with this, this body in terms of the creation of that, which would be two members of this body, so that we don't create a broad act of violation.
Without staff time or support, does that mean we can't call and ask a question?
You can call and ask questions, certainly, but in terms of, in terms of setting up meetings and taking, taking minutes?
Oh, yeah.
And taking that, that type of action is beyond the scope.
I think, I think the, the members, whoever they turn out to be of this ad hoc committee, will be responsible for producing reports from the committee to the commission.
Right, and it would be, yes, obvious.
Without, without a staff member being there, recording, or controlling, or taking minutes.
Those two individuals would be coming back with updates, yes.
So, I have a question about that. If we have a committee, and we have meetings, and we want to announce them, can we do that?
and we want to announce them, can we do that on the town's website or is that using staff? If we have, if we send out, if we do want to have a webpage or newsletter, do we?
If you're creating a webpage, that's something that staff wouldn't be involved in. If you're wanting to announce something in terms of an ad hoc, um.
A meeting.
There's, there is the possibility where that could be added where it's simply staff not generating it, but taking that information.
And just sticking it on the calendar or something.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Just a question. Do you have a sense that this is a, um, a community meeting that will be supported by the city council by, by their involvement and membership as they are the body who can allocate funds to do this if a part-time person was required to do this?
There is no part-time person that's been allocated as, as identified in the beginning.
I, I know that. And we can't do it. We don't have the ability to raise funds.
Right. And it was discussed at council. Now, look, council also has a housing advisory committee as well. So this is.
Of course they do.
Independent of that. And if there are community members within this ad hoc that would, that the two members of this planning commission would, would prefer to have on this as an advisory for discussion, that's certainly within the realm of possibility as well. Financially, to, to your point, in terms of finding financial pieces to that, council was pretty, pretty direct about, about identifying that there is no, there is no funding.
So I know we, the, without staff time support, I get that. Does that include, you said questions are, we're okay with questions. What about research? Can we ask you guys to research something? No?
No. That's, that's, that's one of those big time sucks for the staff.
Yeah.
Yeah. Questions, however, as they come up.
Yeah.
I don't see an issue with that. But if the questions lead to research, then that's, that's where I would stop the buck at that point.
Can we ask that you provide us or?
Public records. You can always ask for public records.
I know, I know, I know.
Yes, absolutely.
Or like some sort of standardized reporting tool that we can use or, you know, some sort of.
Microsoft Word?
You're looking for a platform to get the, to get the ball rolling to a certain degree?
Like the standard approach to collect the data. Like we can't just go out there and search on the internet and pull up some random stuff. You know what I mean? Like is there some?
Well, the internet certainly has random stuff.
Certainly does. Uh, but I just want to make sure there's some standards set forth before we.
There's the constant evolving California state law on housing.
Look, there's certain parameters that you can work within, but there's also, um, this body can come up with during their discussions as updates, as updates come forward. Within the realm of, of reason, obviously.
Okay. And then I have another quick question. Um, the results from this housing committee, um, where would they go? What would happen to them?
Come right back here first.
Okay. But then what? Do they go to the council?
Then if, if the commission finds that there's something that the commission as a whole thinks is worthwhile to recommend to city council, I would say, then we would have, we would have agendized something on housing and recommend it.
So the results would be a recommendation to the council?
Right.
And then council would then do whatever they want to do?
Do whatever they do with it, yeah.
Question. Lucas, did you say that the city council has a housing advisory committee?
They don't.
Do or don't?
They don't.
Um, now I'm questioning myself in terms of whether they do or don't.
City councilman can answer that, but they don't.
Not yet, she said.
Yes.
Please come up.
We're confused.
Yes.
So at that, um, same April 11th meeting, uh, the council majority voted that instead, that we, we are going to, we are considering, um, forming a housing, affordable housing committee within the council. But before we do that, we're going to hold a series of workshops.
Oh, that's right.
And, um, yeah. And, um, and so the vote to allow an ad hoc committee with, 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 um, within your, uh, commission is our, our idea is that if we do structure something formally within the council, then we could sometime, somehow work in collaboration or if you want, if you have a group of volunteers who wants to meet and do research and, you know, offer some suggestions, then we would not want to, to hold you back from that.
Yeah. Now presumably the, the two members of this commission, whoever they turn out to be, can invite members of the committee, or of the community to attend any of those meetings.
It is your volunteer committee.
And city council members if you want.
And city, well.
Up to two.
City council members are members of the community, yes.
Who, who is going to plan the workshops?
That is something that staff is working on.
Yeah, I'll respond to that. That's something staff is working on.
You, you have been given direction in terms of what you need to cover?
City manager's office is working on that, yes.
I'm sorry, who?
The city manager's office is working on that.
Oh.
Um, I'm, I'm reminded in part of, of a still existing standing committee of the planning commission called the Complete Streets Committee. Hasn't met since before COVID. But it was a standing committee. There were two of us, two planning commissioners on it and had anywhere from three or four to six or eight members of the public at any one of our meetings. No city staff, no help from city staff. When we put together, uh, complete with text and pictures and tables and the whole thing, that master plan that is now adopted by the city council, but it was produced by the committee. So we did it. It can be done.
So, um, if I can follow up on one thing, the last meeting you asked Judy and I to come back to talk because we were the previous committee.
I asked, I asked if you still wanted to do it.
Yeah. Well, so we did meet and, uh.
Any two members of this commission can meet anytime.
I'm just saying, we met to discuss it and we also met with help of Ojai to get a better understanding of what they were doing. So we were kind of like looking at what this committee might do. So I just wanted you to know we, we had done that and we've thought a little bit about what.
Prepping for the work.
Yes. So, um, but anyway.
Jamie?
I just have a question. The, the, uh, page one of one and, and tab five is titled, um, Housing Advisory Committee. And I heard the word affordable creep in there to the discussion prior to that. Um, and I've heard that before. Um, is there, is the word affordable given any, um, uh, honor in, in these terms? I mean, has the city council adopted the word affordable? Is there? We just making it, are we making it up as we go along?
It's coined Housing Advisory Committee for a reason. It allows for affordability. If you identify it as only affordable, then you're earmarking yourself only for affordable.
So this can cover affordability as well as any other factors that might occur to the committee members?
When you say affordability, you're talking the state definition of affordable. It's, it's a very subjective term.
Yeah. It's, that's the only one that carries any water within the city structure.
Subjective to the point of, of HCD identifying what that, what that looks like. And then SCAG obviously adopting it as well.
I don't think we ever thought of it narrowed in those terms, but housing in general and making it more, more likely that we, you know, that we can both make the existing housing more, um, I don't know, it was affordable. livable and, and also, you know, variety of the houses. But we didn't, we never thought of that just as an affordable housing committee.
Okay. Nor did I, but I, I heard the word used a little earlier.
Yeah.
We have, we have housing in the community now, in my opinion, that ranges from extremely luxurious to substandard. And, and I would think that that whole spectrum might be a part of the discussion of this committee.
Yeah.
Not just affordability, but in the case of substandard housing, is there anything that the city can do to encourage upgrade, for example? Okay. Um, what we have left is a, is a decision.
Don't we have public input?
Um, as a matter of fact, we do. Yes. Let's, uh, let's go to a public comment portion. Thank you very much. Of this, I have three speakers cards and in the order in which they were given to me, first up is Ruth Miller. Thank you, and I'm sorry for almost forgetting.
It's okay. It's late. My name's Ruth Miller and, um, thank you for letting me speak to you. Um, we have started a team of Ojai Valley residents looking to improve the lives of the homeless and hopefully form a year-round shelter. Um, first of all, I want to say that a part of me wants to see no growth in the Ojai Valley at all. I came here in the seventies and I had the privilege of working downtown in the eighties and nineties. I loved it. And I know there are a lot of people who lived here a lot longer than that. They don't want to change either. And I get it. I understand that. But I've been looking into what the, who actually the homeless are in the Ojai Valley. And, uh, the more I see a need for truly low-cost housing, income-based rentals and a year-round supportive transitional shelter, which could be a central point in providing services such as social services, food, as well as coordination and transportation for medical and mental health needs. I got these off of our Ojai, um, home Facebook page. This is just in the last month. And this one wants a daughter to move in and, good morning, this is not an easy post to write, but I'm in immediate need. I've been living in the Ojai Valley for eight years, the same apartment for seven years. I've never been late on my rent. I have raving reviews from my landlord. I urgently need a place to call home. My landlord wants his daughter to move in. That's one. Two, this is a gentleman who has been homeless for some time. He's still looking for anything, a room, anything. And he keeps posting. I've seen his post time after time. This one, hello, Ojai. We just got our sixty-day notice from our landlords who have decided to sell. My husband and I will be needing a new place to call home by June first or sooner. We currently pay twenty-two hundred a month, which is about as high as we can go. I know it's not very far these days. Now I have joined the many residents of Ojai who are being displaced. My landlords are turning my home into two rental properties, open to any rentals in the valley. I have a thirty-pound Queensland Heeler that goes to work with me. Still looking for a two-bedroom home for rent. Been looking for a while now. Both myself, my husband and our four-year-old son, we have two small dogs. We've been at the same place in downtown for eight years, but the landlord raised the rent and we can't afford it anymore. We live and work in Ojai. Are they going to all be homeless? I hope not. But this is the face of our homeless. I talked to, um, help of Ojai recently and our largest homeless population are single women with their children, living in cars and couch surfing. They live here. They work here. They go to school here. They don't want to leave. They're doing whatever they can to stay in Ojai. It's important. The next moving into largest are the elderly who, yeah, were being displaced, not me, but they're being displaced. The rent's too high. They're living in cars. At least they have a lock. They get to shower twice a week when, um, the homeless shelter provides that. And, you know, what else are they doing? I don't know. What are we going to do about them? Is that okay? Sorry, I'm getting emotional. It appears to me that there needs to be a coordinated partnership between city, county, help of Ojai, the Ojai Valley Family Shelter, service organizations and churches. Our team is energized and willing to do whatever is needed. We just want you to know that we're here and we're looking forward to working with you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next, David Wyand.
David, and I'm, I'm right along with Ruth. Um, I was homeless in, in town for quite some time and I, I'm not homeless anymore, but affordable housing is a big thing. There are people who work, work at grocery stores and waiting tables and, um, stuff like this nowadays that are having to drive up from Oxnard or way out Camarillo all over the place. I personally have been going out and talking to the, um, homeless people to, um, ask them about their willingness to go to a shelter and, and, um, asking about their willingness to help, help themselves with maybe some of the problems that they're afflicted with, like drug addiction and alcoholism as a result of having, um, no place to stay and, um, it, it, it just perpetuates it, you know? And when I was in the streets, um, I was in alco, I, I was in the streets because I was drinking too much. And I was drinking too much because I was in the streets. It was a hard thing to pull out of. Luckily, I had friends that, um, gave me, I got arrested too many times. But the laws have changed and not, none of the homeless are getting bothered around here. So, and without, uh, a place for them to go, it's, um, it's just hard, hard for them. And I, I think that, um, that we should figure out some kind of situation. Either it be a, a city building that could be taken over to be made into a homeless shelter or a piece of the property back, the eight acres back here that could have a little spot that we could put a tiny home village on, that, that we could, um, help people, um, better themselves as human beings and, and integrate back into the community because most of the homeless people here are from Ojai. And I, I've been talking to them and I actually, um, just minutes ago, or a half an hour ago, I was out there, um, talking to a gentleman that, that's willing to go to a detox center and to a treatment center if I go out and find that for him. And, um, I'm willing to do anything. I, I, um, I, because I was in the situation, I, I have the willingness to help the people that are in the streets find a better solution than they have now. And, um, like I said, I'm willing to do anything. If you need me, um, you could call and meet for, for help.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will.
Cool. Could you and Ruth, um, give us your contact information after the meeting or whatever?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that would be good.
I just have a quick question for Ruth. Ruth, have you seen an increase in, if you want to come back up to the podium?
I don't very well.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm hoping you have Bluetooth access so I can directly connect to my hearing aids. Do you know if you do?
I know.
No? Come on, guys.
Um, I just had a quick question. Have you seen an increase in the population that is going to the homeless shelter?
There isn't a homeless shelter.
No, no, I mean the temporary. Don't we have a temporary?
Actually, what happened, um, the homeless shelter that currently exists for four months.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I had to talk to Martha Deechfield.
Yeah.
And, um.
That's at the Grange Hall?
It went down because of COVID because they were requiring, uh, COVID vaccinations. And a lot of them didn't want to do that. And David was saying also, um, there is a problem sometimes with the homeless getting out to the homeless shelter, which is at the Grange Center.
Right.
And again, it's just for, not just, I mean, it's huge. It really is.
It's about two miles from here.
This winter to get out of the rain. I don't want to, you know, under account what they're doing.
Right.
I would want to get out of the rain if I was homeless also. But that, that's what we have right now.
Right.
It's been four months. And it's just at night. So bright and early in the morning, the guests need to leave. And if it's raining, you know, they're out in the rain. Um, most of them, as I understand it, go to the library, but it doesn't open. They're out in the rain for a while before the library opens.
What happened to the churches that used to have them, uh?
Know why that.
Because my, my dad used to run the Baptist church one, uh.
Yeah, they used to alternate and I don't know why that changed. I don't.
Well, the church, the churches were taking turns during the cold weather.
Yeah.
And one, one night a week each church would take, uh, to have people in just like the Grange Hall does.
Yeah. My dad ran the one for the Baptist church, I know.
Martha could give you a lot more information on that. And Rick Raines was running the, uh, program before Martha too. So, you know, if you want some history on that, if it's important, I'm happy to get it for you. I'll leave you my contact information and.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm doing a lot of research and trying to pull together the different agencies and what they're already offering. There are quite a few resources out there, but we don't have a year. But we don't have a year-round shelter. We don't have one central place to offer services.
Yeah, arguably, the middle of the summer is as difficult as the middle of the winter with rain.
The heat, you mean?
Yeah.
But it's easier to get out of the heat. I understand they go to the library.
Yeah. Under a tree even, yeah. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Renee Roth?
Bill, you're gonna speak?
Oh, I had a card from Renee, I didn't have one from Bill.
But we expect Bill to always speak.
Hi, this is a personally challenging thing to talk about for me. My name's Renee Roth, and I didn't expect to get up here and get emotional. But a friend of mine, her son, who went through high school here and went to North Off, became homeless in Ojai, and ended up on the streets in Ventura, and struggled immensely. And he was a very good friend of my daughter's. They went to school together, they played tennis at the athletic club together. And he's still struggling. And so I personally feel like I've made a commitment to try to do something about this. We had the fortune to hear Matt LeVere speak last week on Sunday, and he spoke about a program that the county has put together to work with all the cities in Ventura County. And that program was based on a memorandum of understanding. And that memorandum of understanding is right here. And the city of Ojai has signed that memorandum of understanding. Somebody has a copy of that memorandum of understanding. In that memorandum, it says, whereas homelessness is an issue that transcends the borders of each city in the county, and whereas reducing and eliminating the problems associated with homelessness in Ventura County will take the efforts of each city and the county working cooperatively. And whereas it is the purpose and the intent of this MOU to commit the efforts of each city and the county to the common good of all, to help and address homelessness in this county. Now, therefore, the parties of this MOU, for good and valuable consideration, agree to the following. Number one, commit to actively participate in the continuum of care by requiring service providers in each community to sign on to this MOU between Ventura County and these other organizations. Develop a crisis response system, which includes emergency housing resources for those who present as homeless in their jurisdiction. We should be doing this now. The city of Ojai should be doing this now. The city of Ojai is not doing this now. And to have this be kicked down the road to a voluntary group of an advisory committee with no staff and no resources is criminal, in my opinion. It really upsets me that we cannot do more to address the issues and the needs of those that are homeless in our community. It also says, require all entities receiving funds for homelessness or housing services to commit to a pathways program by conditioning them into a management information system so you can follow their progress. So what I'm saying is, the county has a fifty-fifty matching program. If the city develops a plan, the county will find funds to help you match the program. The city should be stepping up and doing more. Rachel, I'm really glad you're here at this meeting, and you can hear what I'm saying. This MOU was signed February of 2018.
By whom?
I don't know, I have the unsigned copy. So who was the mayor and who was the city manager in the city of Ojai who has neglected this responsibility? As far as I'm concerned, this is major neglect, and it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak? Bill Miley, come forward, sir.
Good evening, Bill Miley. I have a long investment history in housing elements. Goes back to cycle four, cycle five, and cycle six. I've been here a lot. This one, which is our current cycle six, as you know, has lots of parts, many pages. So I think the creation of a two-member commission committee is a really good idea. Another reason is, there are many stakeholders involved here. Huge numbers, they're all over the place. An example, a very deep example of a problem is the one that's just been talked about. Who talks to these stakeholders and brings them together? Who keeps up on what they're doing? Renee brought up this issue of the fifty-fifty program. Most of us didn't know about it until Supervisor LeVere mentioned it on Sunday. We need to have a group that networks on an ongoing basis with key players, like Help of Ojai and Ruth Miller's new program that she wants to bring to Ojai. And there are many details in the action plan in this, many, that need to be looked at, prioritized, and worked on. So I think this is a really good idea. And if a couple of commissioners are willing to do this without staff, that's great, because a lot of us are interested in helping if invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I've said it on many occasions myself to previous city councils. This is a very active community. There are a lot of people out there who want to help. When you need help with something, say so in public, and the public will come forward and help. So, there we are. We're gonna dispose, we're gonna dispense with persons here present first, and then we'll look at online.
Thank you. I just wanted to really say that I know for myself, I share in your concerns about the unhoused in our community and in the county. And also just to clarify that we aren't doing nothing, that I know that because we decided not to go forward with the creation of a housing committee, there is a sense that we don't care about these things, or that we're not doing enough. But our intention in having the workshops was that we could bring experts in who can address all of the concerns that we have about the wide range of housing challenges that we face in our community. And so I just wanted to clarify that we have not decided not to create a housing committee within the council, that we are just taking that step first to decide, do we want an extra committee? Another layer of bureaucracy, do we want that? So I just wanted to say that we are very concerned, and we are taking action.
Are you anticipating a schedule yet for one or more workshops on housing?
Yes, so we, at the meeting, I believe, and I don't remember if it was sixty days or ninety days, but we definitely put this within a timeframe to make this a priority. And so I would need to clarify exactly what that timeframe is, but this is something that we want to do as soon as possible.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Alex, is there anyone in the waiting room with her hand raised?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Then we will close the public comment portion of this item. I think the goal tonight, besides discussing the creation of a housing committee, is if we decide that we wish to have one, that we designate two members here to be a part of that. We did this about a year ago. We named two members at that time, and we suspended that activity or anticipated activity awaiting direction from the new council, which I think we now have. So, at the time, both Commissioner Starkweather and Commissioner Murphy volunteered to be the two members of such a committee. If that's agreeable to everyone, then I think a motion to that effect would be appropriate.
If willing, I'd like to propose that those two members of the commission be renominated by us to whatever forum the committee takes.
It'd be an ad hoc committee of this commission, yeah.
Now, a question, I know it's two, but can we provide assistance to the two?
We can't have a, we can't have a, we can't have a quorum of the commission.
Right.
But you could do, you could do research without Yeah. Being a problem.
No, I think there's, as long as we're not officially meeting, you can speak to one of us.
It's more than officially meeting, though. It also involves communications. So whenever you're communicating with a quorum of the planning commission, you know, it's a potential Brown Act violation.
I see, so.
I would say this, though.
If John did some research and sent that to us, that would not be okay.
Or gave it to Lucas.
To forward on.
Although we're trying to limit staff involvement, I think was the direction.
And that's staff time, because he's got to forward things.
Right.
The forward thing, look, for my staff time, it's the research, it's attending these, it's doing the minutes. I'm still a pass-through. In terms of that aspect, I don't see an issue with that. But going beyond that, I think, is where we run into trouble.
All right, that's fair.
Or maybe, to put it a different way, any other member of the community, like the three of us, could provide an opinion to this committee, but not vote on any recommendation to the council, to the commission?
I don't believe so.
No?
I think you're, I think you're close to a Brown Act.
Well, that's why I'm looking at EPI.
Yeah, I'd encourage, because it's not equivalent to like a public comment, I'd encourage or discourage that activity, because you are weighing in on the process, and it, you know, it's not exactly public and open, and it does involve, I would say, deliberations.
However, you certainly can bring that information to the full body when we have updates that'll be coming forward.
Okay.
That's good.
Okay. And once it's before the full body, someone could do research, since we decided not to decide that night, and bring back their own research and give input on it.
The other thing is, this could literally be a standing item that's on every agenda. And you either have an update, or you don't. The standing item we had for the longest time
Can be a good idea.
Right, was the work program. So we constantly, every meeting, we were looking at each item, identifying which item we were going to start tackling next, and then moving towards.
I don't, I don't think that we're back to the point of having a work program from the new council yet.
I'm not talking, I'm just using that as an example.
No, I understand.
Instead, I'm saying this ad hoc could work in that same fashion.
We could make that a standing item on the agenda as well.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Another quick question. With the meetings that we're gonna have, that we're putting together, public meetings for doing research on housing that the council's putting together. If one of the planning commission members attend those, is that considered a Brown Act violation?
No.
No, okay.
No, workshop should be public, right?
Yes, that's public.
We're not deliberating in a workshop.
Okay, cool, all right.
Right.
Good.
Okay, we had a motion and a second.
Second, I second.
Very good, any more discussion? Alex, let's make a roll call on the motion to establish an ad hoc housing advisory committee with Commissioner Starkweather and Murphy as the members.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes, okay.
Thank you. It's a big responsibility, but I want to just ask this question about research and so forth. There's so many people in our community who can do research. I mean, lots of times when I write stuff or make speeches and so forth, someone else has helped me do the research. So there's plenty of people out there that we can get. I am not worried about that aspect of it.
If I were on the committee like you, I think I would be asking the community for assistance.
Yeah.
And I guarantee you'll get it.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, good. Let's move on to item six, future agenda items. Lucas, take it away.
Before you go there, could I just ask if, like, that room would be available for meeting, for small meeting? That wouldn't be counted as staff?
It would be available, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The Complete Streets Committee always met right back there.
We can use this for our public hearings?
That's different.
Depends.
You're always pushing, right?
Okay, so, future items, on May seventeenth, I know we have listed here, design review permit, DRP twenty-two-zero-one-six, which is a new single-family, single-story, single-family residence on a vacant lot. It's within Persimmon Hill, it's on Longhorn. That item, I've just found out recently, is not ready. We thought it was going to be ready, but there have been a couple
We're past the deadline for noticing it to the community.
We are, yeah, so it's got to go through a public hearing notice process, which is the ten days. The other item that was on that agenda for the seventeenth is discussion of cancellation of future regular scheduled planning commission meetings. Typically, we've done that in the beginning of the year. Just didn't do it this time, and we're looking at whether or not to do that to kind of, you know, this commission is kind of interesting because you work within the realm of applications as they come in, different than other commissions, right?
That, and ongoing issues of public concern.
Right, I guess that's the other tier. So it's hard to cancel meetings when you could very easily have two or three items suddenly come up that have to be heard within a certain
Applications suddenly become complete.
Yeah, we've got the Permit Streamlining Act, that we've got to make sure we're in compliance with. So, I think that item will come to this body for further discussion at a future meeting. For the seventeenth, I'm not necessarily seeing a item of public hearing capacity, but certainly, I think Chair Quilisi will have to talk after this meeting and see if there is an item that would be going on the seventeenth. If not, there's a possibility that could get canceled.
Okay.
I can't remember the last time we actually canceled a meeting, to be fair. Maybe during the holidays.
Not for lack of any incoming cases.
Yeah.
But as other members may not have heard before, and as Lucas and I have talked before, I have suggested that one thing we might make, if not a standing agenda item, at least a frequent agenda item, is a look back at some cases that we have conditioned and ask in general, how did it work out? Did the applicant actually comply with all the conditions that we put in? If not, is the city compliance officer taking an active part in that? Those kinds of things. I don't know that it takes a lot of staff time. I think those are generally records that you have already.
Right.
But it's creating the admin reports and all of that that takes a lot of time. And I didn't want to do that as a major effort for staff, but to just give us a checkpoint on past cases and say, how did it work out?
It's interesting, we actually did that for two recently, but those were conditioned to come back to this body.
Those, we already had conditioned annually.
But it was a good exercise. But it was a good exercise. There was work that we did on, on the back end of that anyway, just to bring the information forward. So, June 7th, it says items, there's no items on there. I can just tell you right now, we've got three items, um, that have, that have come forward. The one that got pushed to the 17th, we believe, in talking with the applicant, um, as recent as today, that it will be ready for the 7th. So that's one item, and then we have two more items.
Couple of the pending items?
Uh, let me look here. Um, no, actually, which is kind of interesting.
Two brand-new pop-ups.
Yeah, yes. One is a advanced planning item, and then one's current. So, definitely not canceling the 7th.
Okay. If there's, if there's a case or two that's possible to, to, uh, take a look back and see how it worked out, that we could do on the 17th?
Yeah, let me, let me go back and look at projects that have been, you're talking ones that have been built, correct?
Yeah, in the last two or three or four years.
Pull together some information, a one-pager to have a discussion.
Right.
That doesn't take hardly any time at all.
Okay. Any other questions of staff for this?
Not for this purpose, but a little question, staff.
Okay.
Um, and that is, yeah, am I correct in saying that ADUs?
Speak to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Am I correct in saying that, um, ADUs are not to be encumbered to the extent possible by fees, um, uh, at the city level?
You're talking impact fees? Like development impact fees?
I'm talking development fees or impact fees.
Right, those, those parameters were stripped away from cities, 2016, I wanna say, 2017, so it's been a while.
Right. Um, I was surprised, I was asked by a friend to look into, um, how about Casitas Water? Casitas Water will charge you $20,000 to hook up water to an ADU.
Similar, yeah, that's, that's not, it's, it's an impact fee, so there's, we can't require, and remind.
I mean, I know, I know that, I, I know that we have nothing to do with.
Versus the city, so they, they are potentially in violation if they're charging those fees.
Um, well, I mean, I inquired on this person's behalf, because they were interested in, in putting an ADU.
You're talking connection fees, right?
Connection fees.
Yeah, there's also sewer.
Yep.
Oh, sewer fees.
Sewer has connection fees, and for ADUs, if, if they are.
That's what I thought.
No, that's not so. That is not so. Um, state law says, if, if you, if you have a conversion, like a garage turned into an ADU, or a breezeway, or you've created an ADU, a junior ADU as a cutout of a primary residence, that there are no connection fees to local utilities, including sewer.
Right.
Um, on the other hand, if you come into the city and you get yourself a building permit, and you go build a brand-new stick-built ADU in your backyard.
Detached.
Detached ADU, then that is subject to connection fees from local utilities.
Potentially.
That's state law.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and speaking for the sewer board, since I'm on the sewer board, the, the, the fee for an ADU is proportional to the fee for a normal, single-family residence, uh, based on the size and all of that stuff.
Not on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to know who to, who to talk to.
Thank you.
Okay.
We've gone, we've gone almost down a rabbit hole. I wanted to make sure we popped back up.
Right. Um, a director's report?
Uh, nothing to add tonight. I would just like to say that of the two items that we had tonight, I'm, I'm very pleased to see a well-rounded discussion, even members of this body that were not necessarily in agreement, and, and were very strong about that agreement. Still, at the end of the day, um, information was provided, clarification was provided, and a vote was, was, was moved forward, so I appreciate the, the conversation as always.
Any commissioner members have anything else of import to bring out? All right, our city council liaison? Hello again.
Hello again. Uh, just one update, and that is that I spoke with the city manager about the parking, uh, committee, and when we are going to meet next. Um, and, uh, and we do not have a date set yet, but we are all in agreement that, uh, that you are, that when we have that date set, we will notify you and will, will, uh, include you as we discussed.
Does that mean that we have to go through the exercise that we went through tonight to reestablish our parking ad hoc committee?
I think if the city council invol, invites the planning commission to nominate two members to be on that committee, that the planning commission needs to decide by majority vote who those two members are.
Then is that something maybe we should do tonight, so that, that you have it?
We haven't, we haven't been authorized to do it. It's not on our agenda yet.
Okay, the, the auth, we, we author, we offered the authorization, um, the parking committees.
Has there, has there been a city council vote on it?
There has not. Um, the, there has, there has not been a vote on having two planning commission, commissioners on the parking committee, but it is a, it is a ad hoc committee, and within the committee itself, Mayor Protam Ferencina and I both are in agreement, and the city manager as well. Um, so let me talk to the city manager and see about if we do need the full council approval. Um, it was my understanding that we did not, when I, when I spoke with, uh, with James before.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll sort that out, and, and I think.
It sounds like there's, there's certainly interest and support. It's just, it's gotta work itself through the process still, right?
Can we put that on our next agenda, so we're timing things right?
Hold on, if you're gonna, if you're gonna put something on the agenda, let's make sure that we're doing it during the commission comment portion.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then it requires two commissioners in order to put it on.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
As a commissioner, I'll, I'll jump back to, to the future agenda items again, as my comment. If, if we get a head nod from the city manager, or two council members, that we should go ahead and nominate a couple, I'd like to have that decision on the next agenda.
I'll second that.
Secondly, um, we are reaching the end of May, and it's time for us to decide for this commission, I think, I think it's the right time, who's gonna be chair and vice-chair for the next year.
So that should be on the next agenda?
I, I suggest that that should be on the next agenda. It's the right time, because commission, commissioner terms end on the second, uh, second city council meeting of May, of whatever year they end. And so we're going in one-year cycles. It'd be best to keep that one-year cycle within the, the other cycle, I think, of, of the.
We do it once a year and fit it in the same timeframe. We did it last year this time. Maybe a little bit later.
I don't remember when it was, but yeah.
We were on, yeah, we voted, uh.
In May?
June. We got on June, but we, since we didn't get put on till later.
It was delayed. I do remember that, because we were short, we were short commissioners.
Otherwise, Jamie would never have been vice-chair.
All right, in the absence of any other business before the commission at 8:19, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Right. Good work, good work.
Yeah, it was good work.